Well, we've got a little bit under an hour now to get through this discussion item for the work session. I'm sure that we'll have the council president here shortly, but let's go ahead and get started. I'm not sure that he's in a missing time, he doesn't know already. Cheryl, good evening.
Good evening, mayor, members of the council. At the March 23 budget policy work session, council provided a directive to staff to prepare for a sales tax ballot in time to allow or seamless continuing collection of the current half cent sales tax. The purpose of tonight's presentation is to provide an overview of the budget policy direction and decisions made for 2016 to date, as well as the city's financial capacity, to review or provide an overview of the projects for consideration, to have a good understanding from our legal counsel on the process to implement a sales tax, and finally to obtain consensus from the governing body on whether or not we move forward with the half cent sales tax, and if so, which projects are going to be included. Priority-based budgeting is a leading practice for local government. It provides the framework for better informed financial and budgeting decisions, and it helps ensures that a community identifies and protects the values and services that are most important. To that end, Gardner has identified four strategic goals: promoting economic development, improving the quality of life, maintaining fiscal stewardship, protecting our infrastructure and asset management. Budget policy decisions to date under economic development. When staff presented the policy discussion, we talked about the interchanges, as well as opportunities for infield development downtown. Council asked that we look at both. We talked about incentives including infrastructure across Interstate 35, in hopes that it would serve as a development catalyst. With the restructuring of our utilities, we talked about leveraging our utilities, and finally, considering implementation of a half cent sales tax for funding, with the potential split of 50% going towards economic development. Under quality of life, budget decisions to date include that our trails and our pedestrian bridges should be a priority, and that we should consider cash funding those. Most recently, you decided that we would increase the budget to $1.4 million, and ask staff to look at consolidation of the prior district by 2017. Under fiscal stewardship, it's important for us to retain the market value increase in order to move two mills from the general fund to the bond and interest fund to cover delinquencies. I want to remind you, this only covers a portion of our delinquencies. The valuation increase, while it enables the necessary shift of the bond and interest, it allows us to maintain the 25% to 30% general fund balance to maintain the city's credit rating. And implementation of the half cent sales tax, looking at half for streets, and potentially half, or a number to be determined by you tonight for economic development. Under infrastructure and asset management, the 2016-2020 cars project was approved at the May 4 council meeting. While only the 2016 projects are considered for funding by the county, 2017 to 2020 are considered for planning purposes. In 2016, you'll recall, we looked at center street reconstruction from Grand to Kane. The budget policy decisions also include the utility assessments, which we provided in the first quarter for electric, water, and wastewater, and those are included in the upcoming utility budgets. You also recently approved the health insurance premium and the HSA funding, as well as the position classification system and pay plan as an investment in our human assets. And we've included a budget placeholder for a rate study with the utility director, who will be here on Tuesday. So why do we need a half cent sales tax? Plain and simple, we just don't have enough revenue for our projects. We have a financial gap. We're not able to pay for the pavement assessment or any new facilities. As we've discussed, we've got bond and interest, delinquencies, we can cover a portion of it. We have the pavement assessment solutions, and new facilities will require additional new funding. So without new funding, we're only likely to sustain CIP maintenance projects. So the options the council has, or you look at having others help us pay for the city's needs, since they use our roads, they visit our community and our businesses, it reduces the burden to our property owners by having a special sales tax. You have an option that's counterintuitive to what we did last year with the decrease, which is increasing the property tax. Or you can delay or eliminate projects, which is kind of how we got the backlog we have, and then they become more expensive with that delay. So on the street reconstruction, in 2014, we started the comprehensive pavement management plan. We presented that to you at the beginning of 2015, to include reconstruction of failed residential streets. What we've learned is that 70% of the city's streets are residential and collector, which is basically the focus of the reconstruction program. That's 155 lame mouths. Those inspections that were performed in 2014 at the end of the year, which now equates us having had a full year, plus we will have two additional winters, 2015 and 2016, because it will take that long for us to really be able to mobilize and get into production for those repairs, will have a continued decline of the street conditions. So we really aren't in a position to wait. In order to save money, we need to maintain those roads while they're in condition, good to fair condition. So let's take a quick look at what was presented when the pavement management plan was presented. The existing condition of our streets is that 79% are good and satisfactory, but 2/3 of the roads are declining at the same time. Without the additional resources to fund the street plan and to continue repairs using our current piecemeal operation, by 2025, you can see from this graph that 86% of our streets will be fair or poor, which is a complete 180 turn from our current conditions. We're actually on the verge of diminishing returns. You can see that if we're at the fair component, it's $1 for rehab. If we decline down to about serious, we get to about $5 to be able to repave. So if we can't fund them at a dollar, to spend five times that is probably not a realistic The result of the staff recommended three-year plan would be to maintain our current proportion of good and satisfactory streets, and eliminate the poor, serious conditions. It basically allows us to maintain stability. Score enforcement center. We identified the needs through a field evaluation. We conducted a space need study. The space need study did not include land acquisition. Staff plugged in a placeholder for land acquisition, and the estimated cost to include financing for the building and land would be $13.2 million. The public works parks facilities needs were identified through a field evaluation. We did not conduct a space need study. So much like the police facility, we will need one to determine the actual cost. I want to remind you that when we did the space need study for the police facility, the cost, when it came back, was actually double the placeholder amount. So to be fiscally conservative, before we spent additional resources for the study, the governing body needs to be comfortable with implementing the results of a study for this facility, because it commits us to a capital project that's unfunded. And the total cost of doing the facility's study, it's about $20,000. Using the same pavement management assessment program, the parks trails were evaluated, and what we learned was only 22% of the trails were in fair or satisfactory condition, leaving 78% poor to failing. Trail replacement projects would include removal of those trails that have a yawn repair, replacing them by the severity of their rating, and looking at a concrete alternative, for a total of $936 over three years. Gardner Greenway crossings would include two pedestrian bridges, $202,000 looking at cash funding. We've done a lot of work leading up to economic development. We've completed the comprehensive plan, so we now we have a vision and goals. We've completed the economic development strategy plan, and we have the economic development incentive policy. We've met with residents for I-35 and the Gardner Road property area. We have an upcoming meeting for 175th and I-35 property owners. So the governing body, in addition to those efforts, has given directives to extend-look at extended infrastructure as a development catalyst, trying to secure the interchanges and getting on the other side of the interstate, pursuing an aggressive annexation strategy, looking at infield development opportunities, as well as an analysis of our infrastructure. But there's no funding set aside to support these efforts. We have active interest from potential development opportunity-for potential development opportunities on the other side of the interstate, but the question is, can we serve those potential growth areas? So we need an infrastructure analysis to determine if we can serve those areas, if we can just serve what's in the comprehensive plan, and what our options might be for an aggressive annexation plan. With active interest, you absolutely have to have proactive decisions, otherwise we end up with development that is presented to us and on someone else's timeframe. So the policy decision for tonight from the governing body is, should we commit a portion of the sales tax, if you choose to go forward with it, to economic development, and if so, what percentage would we look at for these initiatives? So this chart shows the recap in its senior council packet of the projects for consideration. A couple of key notes: the annual revenue for the half cent sales tax, $1 million. The annual project cost of the items listed here, $2.85 million. That's without any economic development projects. Street projects, $1.3 million annually. The maximum time period for a special sales tax is 10 years. You'll note the justice center, 20 years. So there would be a funding gap for a portion of the timeframe if that project is included. With that, our legal counsel is going to talk about the process for moving forward, if that's the council's desire.
Thank you, Cheryl. Ryan, good evening.
Good evening. The first topic I was going to discuss relates to the existing half cent sales tax. When we were together back in March, there was some discussion about the nature of that half cent sales tax, and whether or not it in fact sunsetted on December 31 of this year. So I've gone back, I've pulled the ordinance, I've pulled all the relevant documentation for that. What that shows is that that half cent sales tax went into place on January 1 of 2006. It was implemented after an election of the electorate. It is limited to two years, and it's limited to two years for a couple of reasons. First off, the statute under-pursuant to which it was adopted specifically limits it to 10 years. That statute has since been repealed, but under that version of the statute, it was limited to 10 years. Additionally, the question that went to the electorate was whether or not we should adopt a special purpose sales tax for a duration of 10 years. Because that was the specific question submitted to the electorate, that is the extent of the nature of the sales tax that can be approved. So to answer that question from back in March, yes, it does expire at the end of this year. And so then, we are presented with the questions that Cheryl talked about, is whether or not to replace that source of revenue. When looking at the different sales tax options, under-by statute, you as the city of Gardner as a city of second class have two options available to you in terms of a sales tax. There is a general purpose of sales tax, which by state statute, you can-you're capped out at 2%. Currently, we have a 1% sales tax in place, so you do have an extra percentage point that you could work with. Then you also have a special purpose sales tax, and you were capped at that by statute by-at 1%. The special purpose sales tax is limited to 10 years in duration. The general purpose sales tax is not limited in duration at all. Both of them have to go to the electorate to be adopted and implemented. The difference is, is that the general purpose sales tax has no sunset and continues into perpetuity unless and until this governing body takes action to repeal that general purpose sales tax. The special purpose sales tax automatically sunsets as our last one, as our current one does after 10 years. The other difference between the two types of sales taxes are that a general purpose sales tax, just as the name would imply, can be used for any-for any reason, with the few noted revenue spending restrictions that I'll talk about here in a little bit. The special purpose sales tax is limited to the special purpose which is specifically adopted and approved by the voters. As I mentioned before, both of them have to be adopted by an election of the electorate. In other words, this governing body can't just simply impose a sales tax upon the citizens of Gardner. And the submission of the sales tax to an election can be done in one of two manners, and I'll get into the procedure a little bit-in a little bit more detail here in a minute. But very generally speaking, to initiate a vote as to whether or not we will have a sales tax, there are two ways you can do it. One is that this governing body can basically pass a resolution calling for the election. And we'll talk about here in a minute, the process that you have to walk through for that. The second option is, is that if 10% of the electorate of Gardner signed a petition calling for an election, they can submit it to this governing body, and then this governing body is then compelled to adopt a resolution calling for the election. Okay, so the process for adoption of the sales tax, and I'll talk about some of my communications with the election office here in a minute. The preference of the election office is to notify them at least six months in advance, for reasons that we will talk about. Our timeframe is a little constrained. The election office is willing to work with us on that timeframe, so we'll talk about that condensed timeframe here in a second. But the mandatory statutory step that has to be taken is that we have to adopt a resolution calling for the election at least 90 days before the election. And that call, importantly, must identify four specific things: the date and time of the election, the sales tax rate that's going to be applied, the effective date of the tax, and the statement describing the purpose or the purposes that the revenue is going to be used for. So in other words, by the time you adopt that resolution, you have to be firm as to exactly the nature of this sales tax, the amount it's going to be in, and the purpose or purposes for which you're going to use it for, unless it's a general purpose sales tax, then you wouldn't have to specify the purpose. Then, from that 90 days out, then there are some publication requirements 21 days before the election, and then the election. We can talk about some of the options, in terms of really the two options, the type of election that you would want to have. It's at your discretion, and the two options are either a mail ballot, mail ballot election, or a live polling election. Some of my communications with the election office may affect that. Really, the two target dates that we would be looking at would either be September 1 of this upcoming, you know, of 2015, for potentially a live poll election, and I'll talk about why that date might be in a pigeonhole here in just a minute, or September the 15th for either a mail ballot or a live polling election. The Johns Kennedy Election Office, if we do a special election, I've got the cost estimates down there, about $35,000 to $45,000. There is another jurisdiction that's looking at doing a special election on September the 1st, and so if we share that date for a live polling election, then we would just share the cost with that other jurisdiction, so there could be a cost savings associated with that. Some of the things you might consider in the two options, mail ballot versus live polling, the mail ballot has better turnout. You're going to have more people, according to the election office, you're going to have more people that respond as compared to the live polling. The reason why we have to, why we're shooting for that timeframe in September, is that through Laura's communications with the state, we are required to be basically done with our process, meaning had our election, then after the election, we're required to, and I'll talk about that here in a second, adopt an ordinance, levy-ing the sales tax, publish it, and then get that to the state by the first week of October, right Laura? And so that enables the state to walk through its statutory process of notifying retailers at least 60 days prior to the imposition of the sales tax, and so that's the timeframe that we're looking at, if we don't want any lapse between the expiration of the current sales tax, set to expire on December 31, and the sales tax, should we choose to go forward with it. Okay, and so this is a post-election process, and that's just what I was talking about. It takes them a week to certify the results, then we have to adopt the ordinance, publication, and then notification. So that's the process that we have to walk through to get us to meeting that January 1 date. Governing body direction, that's what we're looking for here tonight. Basically, we need direction for the election office, because we are now in this truncated timeframe, whether it is in fact the desire of this governing body to move forward, at least with an election, on the sales tax question on those dates. Ultimately, we will have to decide on whether it's going to be special purpose, and the reason, or pardon me, the purposes for which we're going to use those funds, but probably most emergently, with-in terms of, if we don't want a gap from the expiration on December 31 to imposition of a new tax on January 1, is direction from this council that, yes, we do want to go forward with an election, and pick one of those two dates in September. So. That's all I have. I'll take questions over here.
All right. Well, before we do that, and thank you, Ryan. With the presentation complete, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to make public comment regarding the loan discussion item for the work session, now would be the appropriate time to do it. Just step to the podium, make-state your name and address for the record, and be heard.
Good evening. My name is Debbie Hickman, 848 South Sumac in Gardner. I've gone over and over and over this, and after listening to the presentation, what I hear is, not enough money to cover expenses. But I haven't seen what the total expenses are. And tonight, you're being asked to move forward and to identify which projects you want included. In this budget circle of life thing that we seem to have on every presentation, we'll go with the budget, CIP seems to be right at the beginning process of a part of the budget. We haven't-we never got one approved for 2015. Where is 2016 CIP? Because that is at the beginning part of the budget process. So what bothers me is, we don't have enough money, but I don't know what the expenses are. That bothers me. Gardner also sometimes has not made the best decisions to finance their current debt on future growth. That's something to kind of, I guess, kind of keep in mind. What bothers me too, is that I have the feeling this is just kind of the beginning of the citizens being hit with all kinds of things that are going to deal with economic development, which is still kind of, still kind of a cloudy area as to what exactly, where are we at in our economic development? We've had the meetings and the things like that, but as a citizen, I'm in the dark. I have no idea where we are and where we stand. So today, you're asking for money without showing me what the expenses are, totally. And I guess I don't understand that. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. With no one else coming forward, questions for Cheryl or Brian regarding special sales tax, or general sales tax? Questions going forward?
I have a question. In all the discussion and the notes that I've seen, I haven't seen anything that mentions the TIF that expires on Walmart, which is worth about a million a year, roughly the same as the half cent sales tax. So what are we planning to do with that fund, or with that money?
It is factored into the budget revenue already, so we've accounted for that, and it's about $800,000. About $800,000.
And it's been factored in for years and years. We've known it's going to pay off for a long time.
The other thing that's concerning to me is, as we talk about retaining the valuation increase, and I don't know that everybody understands, and all the people out there really understand what that means, and I just want to make sure that it's understood that we're talking about the money that we will get from the valuation increase when the county tax appraiser goes out and looks at your house and says, your house is no longer worth $160,000, it's now worth $175,000. And we're talking about an equivalent of about two mills, and that, in layman's terms- And we're talking about an equivalent of about two mils, and that, in layman's terms, or Lee Moore's terms, is about twenty-eight dollars a month for a hundred and seventy thousand dollar home. So I just want to make sure that we all understand that's what we're talking about. We're going to, we're basically keeping that twenty-eight dollars a month, and we're going to tack on a half-cent sales tax. That's all I have.
Anybody else have questions or comments?
A question on the economic development portion of it, and infrastructure and those needs. You know, we talked about if we're interested coming to a percent that we would need, you know, I haven't seen exactly what we need, you know, what are we looking at for that?
Well, we know that if we're looking to get through on the other side, we, those numbers could range anywhere from four million to about thirteen million, depending on what option we look at and whether or not we look at just trying to provide services to a particular property, or whether or not we look at the entire area. So what we probably want to do is understand what we're going to allocate towards it, and then determine what kind of service we can provide on the other side of the interstate.
You know, maybe that helped get a little conversation rolling on this. You know, I'm against doing a general sales tax. There's no sunset, which I'm certainly not in favor of, but when I look at the competing priorities, the estimated revenues, and factoring in that the million dollars a year in estimated annual revenue, that's in, you know, 2015 terms, that's without a, Oshlins coming online, which will certainly bring sales tax dollars to the area that we haven't seen before because it's a destination retailer instead of a convenience retailer. But also, you know, the CBS folks have got all the property under contract, they need to develop a pharmacy in downtown Gardner, which would actually also bring some sales tax dollars home because there's people that have health insurance coverage that mandates that they use CBS, and they're driving to Olathe and they're taking their sales tax dollars with them. So you have to anticipate, actually you all don't have to anticipate, I am anticipating that we're, the estimated annual revenue from a half-cent sales tax is probably going to be greater than a million dollars, and we've got between the pavement management assessment, it's six point six million, and the neighborhood street reconstruction, which we're talking about financing with ten-year general obligation bonds, talking about five million, that adds up to about eleven point six million, and that gets us pretty close to what we're anticipating the revenue a half-cent sales tax would provide. So if I take into consideration the ETC citizen satisfaction survey, year after year after year, where streets and traffic are always one and two on top priorities, you know, we've got a, we've got a total estimated revenue coming in, and estimated expenditure that are going to probably be pretty close together, and I think, you know, if we're going to consider special half-cent sales tax, unfortunately, as much headway as we've made with getting economic development, infrastructure in place, you know, so that we can do economic development, getting the roots in, we're probably not quite there yet, and if we need something defined for a special half-cent sales tax, I think that the taking care of the streets and sidewalks for the citizens of Gardner seems like a logical place to start.
Well, this is the thing I'm going to have, and you're right, I think we need to prioritize because I'm looking at this list of the actual numbers that have been given to us by staff, and obviously there's a gap here. I mean, we're looking at a half-cent sales tax over ten years, and even if you were put in an average annual progression of three percent or four percent in terms of increased revenues from the sales tax from just economic growth, we don't come anywhere near the amount of money we're going to need in order to be able to do the things we have on this list. I mean, let's-
Which is exactly why I'm saying we need to prioritize and handle something we can-
You're absolutely right. So I mean, you know, when we look at streets, trails, and obviously you've got pedestrian bridges, one of them washed out yesterday because of the rains, or on Sunday because of the rain, so, you know, we've already seen, there's needs there. I mean, I think, I think that if we were to look at the priorities on this, we'd have to put those at the top, and even then, we don't have enough money coming in with the sales tax extension to cover those needs either.
True.
And so, I mean, I'm having a hard time reconciling, understanding this. I would rather deal with a sales tax than with a property tax, because a sales tax, one, is being paid for by people outside of the city of Gardner who come here to shop. Okay? And two, it's spread out by, you know, amongst more people because you don't put it all on property owners through a property tax increase. So, you know, renters, you know, people who are, you know, who are transients coming through the area, they're going to be paying this as well. So, you know, from that perspective, I think that a sales tax would be a better option, but as we said, it doesn't even pay for, you know, they pay for a little more than a third of what our ultimate need's going to be. So I think that we're still at some point going to have to look at additional revenue sources.
Well, and I, which is probably, if what we're trying to do is figure out, do we want, because we can have a special sales tax that's more than half a cent, I think the reason, and even those that weren't on the council at the time, they were sitting in the audience, I think the reason that everybody's identified the half cent is because it's something that the citizens are used to, comfortable with, something that they approved ten years ago so that we could do the aquatic center in Celebration Park, which were more wants than needs, whereas the streets and the sidewalks are more needs than wants. And I do think that trail reconstruction, and I'm glad that you brought that up, because that's, that's something that, you know, if, with any luck, if we continue to see some economic development coming to town, you know, the revenue that we're going to see from that half cent might actually get us enough to pay for the two asset pavement management assessment and reconstruction, but with any luck, maybe it'd get to the trail reconstruction too.
Yeah, the issue I've got is, you know, we need a new justice center.
Sure.
That's clear. I mean, anybody who's been out to the police department, I call it kind of the storefront over there, knows exactly what we're talking about here, and anybody who's been, you know, in the citizens academy and has gone to the tour and seen the facilities knows we've got a problem. And understand, we're kind of in a position where we're having to deal with the last twenty years of neglect or longer with regard to infrastructure, so we're having to pay the piper here. Okay? And I totally understand that. I feel that the best way to manage the infrastructure going forward is through a more broad-based type of assessment rather than going after property tax increases. So, you know, I'm, in that sense, if we target this solely to infrastructure, okay, for now, let's take the economic development piece and put it aside, and work on that from the standpoint of general revenues coming into, you know, the general fund from appreciations and property tax valuations, and just work on, just specifically, you know, move that sales tax into infrastructure only. I mean, I don't know if there's any consensus on the council here, but understanding we have needs here that go beyond the half cent.
Oh yeah, no, I think everybody gets that.
Does it, does it make sense? And I, you know, and again, this is why we take it to the people of the city, and not why we just, you know, go ahead and just pass it ourselves. But, you know, understanding the current infrastructure needs, which are much greater than the million dollars a year here, would it be possible to look at an additional quarter cent? Yes, and the reason why I mention that is because that way we know that we've got the cash coming in to manage our infrastructure needs, are high priorities. Again, that doesn't, that doesn't fix the justice center, all right? It doesn't fix the public works and parks and rec facilities. Is that, is that possible for us to look at that? And I know that that means a tax increase, okay, but again, a lot of it's not being paid by people in the city. It's going to be paid for by people that are visiting the city, it's going to be paid for by, you know, individuals who come here and shop, you know, and do business here. I'm going to throw that out there, it's like kind of a bomb about to go off, but, you know-
I'm, okay, go ahead.
One thing I worry about is, and I talked to Cheryl about this, is that we don't have this yet, I mean, the citizens go out and vote on it in exact September. The problem I see is if the state, since its current budget cut decides to increase its tax rate on sales tax, and now we've got a double whammy coming down where the state's increased it and then we increased it, we're going to be way in above what we currently are right now.
I think every municipality is having that same, that same discussion.
I just want everyone to be aware of that potential, because if that happens, the chance of getting something bigger through is less likely.
And I think that through discussions that I've had with some folks at Topeka, I don't think that's going to happen. I don't think this legislature is going to allow for that sales tax to go back up again.
Well, you looked like you wanted to get in earlier. Was there something you wanted to say?
No, I think it was already covered. I was, I was thinking the same thing that Steve said, that we're not anywhere near the amount of money that we're going to need for these projects, and I, you know, I'm just kind of wondering, I was wondering where, you know, how we were going to fill the gap, what's the plan for filling the gap?
Yeah.
And I guess I'm, I would be among the consensus, if there was one, for targeting infrastructure, because I know that, based on the folks that I've spoken with, I know that most folks would get behind an infrastructure injection.
And when you say infrastructure, are you just talking streets primarily?
Streets, sidewalks.
Trails.
Trails. Personally, I'd like to also see about stormwater, but that's, you know, that's something that could be open to discussion, but that's something we haven't even talked about here. You know, there are still neighborhoods that have that issue, so.
Yeah, and when it comes to capital projects like the justice center or the, you know, merging public, public works and parks and rec, you know, that's, yes, there's probably going to be additional cost involved in there, but, you know, we've got an item on the agenda this evening where we're going to, you know, save another three, four hundred thousand dollars off the term of the loan, but, you know, we've managed some bond issues where we anticipated a possible tax increase that eventually we didn't end up having to institute. I know Christie has talked about that before. It comes in especially with the Grand Street improvements. I mean, we, we were anticipating a two mil increase for that, and we haven't had the increase at all.
What's our fallback plan if, if the voters say no?
We would have to talk with you about the scope of what we can do for street projects, and you would be looking at just paying for what you could based on the revenue you have.
My only concern is just the passage. I mean, you know, I'd rather have the one million than the one point five million, or I mean, not than, rather than, but I'd rather have the one million than nothing. That's my only concern about, I'm sure, you know, the three quarters certainly cover more things, but taking this to the public, and, I mean, we'd have to have a lot of education and a lot of, you know, information out there, and my concern would be, you know, would there be a negative image or a negative feedback if we went up to three quarters as opposed to the half?
Well, and, you know, if, if going to three quarters got us the streets and sidewalks, the trails, and the public works and parks and rec building, that would be one thing, but it, it doesn't get us on those, those two other pieces that we're talking about. And, you know, and I'm kind of with Todd on this one, in that a half cent has been something that has shown to be doable, palatable.
My concern is that we're going to be here a year from now, and we're going to have the same discussion about raising another tax. And I would rather, as I said, if we looked at the impact upon a community from the standpoint of a sales tax versus a property tax, and knowing that those needs will still have to be paid for, and I don't want to sneak in through the back door a mil levy increase in order to be able to pay for these without a vote of the people, I think we owe it to the people of the city to have a vote. A sales tax requires a vote. Property tax increase does not require a vote, and I wouldn't be in favor of a property tax increase without a vote. So, I mean, it's, you know, we've still got an issue with our revenue if we go with half. We have much less of an issue filling our current needs with a three-quarter cent, and I think that that can be, that can be approved. I don't think that that's going to be, you know, and I know it sounds, it sounds like, you know, okay, Mr. Conservative is looking for a tax increase. I'm not looking for it, it's being forced on us because we have too many needs that haven't been addressed for so long, but I would rather see a sales tax levy than a property tax levy any day of the week.
Christie, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, so, I mean, I think everybody's been saying, if I look at these numbers, if we just go for infrastructure, it's right about ten million, and the way I see it, I mean, if we decide that we want to do a new justice center and a new public works, the options are going to be to bond it, which if we do that, you always have the risk of having to eventually, I mean, we saw it a few years ago when that wasn't paying for itself. So, I mean, I guess it is what it is, I mean, if that's the decision that we make, now what we could do is say, okay, we're going to hold off at least on these two and see what type of new revenue opportunities we have. I mean, but I think from an infrastructure perspective, it looks like based on the estimates here, the half cent would cover it, and I kind of agree that going to three quarters, okay, we may have a little bit more money, but it's still not going to be enough to cover the justice center and the public works.
And I don't expect that, but even with the half, even with the half cent, we don't cover everything. Preservation and reconstruction alone go to one point two million, almost one point three million.
Yeah, I was looking at the total over ten million dollars. The ten million dollars, if I look at the estimated cost-
That's correct.
-roughly between just the infrastructure, you're right at about ten million dollars.
But in the first three years, we're going to see a shortfall, a significant shortfall. That's my concern. And how do we make up that shortfall? Because we have to pay for those streets, we have to pay for the sidewalks.
Well, I, here's what I'm, here's what I'm hearing from the DAS, Rich is concerned about what they're going to be doing in Topeka. Todd and I are both of the opinion that maybe a half cent is something that we can get past. I'm not sure what I'm hearing from Christie, but it sounds like from you and Lee, we're talking about three quarters of a cent. Christie, what is?
I'm good with, I, my opinion is a half cent would get us to where, from an infrastructure perspective, I'm fine with either, because if we're going to vote for it, we'll have the flexibility to do that.
Is it possible to have on the ballot, you know, one or the other for the citizens?
Well, if it's, if you're going to do. Yeah.
But if, but if they're pulling either.
Yeah, all right. If both questions are approved, then you have, well, you can't have a one point two, five percent special purpose sales tax, and that could-
That would've been easy.
I know.
Good challenge.
Rich, which way would you be leaning on speaking? Christie's on the swing.
Probably on the, I'm probably just on the, we know we can get, you know.
If- If revenues far exceed, I mean, expenses and we, you know, we pay for this stuff early, what happens if the tax sunset, is it paid for or do we?
You can repeal it. You can repeal the tax by governing body action.
Otherwise, what are those funds, do they just stay in infrastructure? If that's what we, if it's a special tax, they just stay in infrastructure?
Right.
Yeah, true. We could, we could probably say that it still go to the same streets, sidewalk, trails. As part of the question, we could probably say that, couldn't we?
What was the question?
The question is that if, okay, say, say revenue comes in hotter than we're anticipating and it pays for all this stuff in advance, could we, as part of the language, say anything that accrues after the repayment of the debt would still go towards street sidewalks, trails? That it would always only go to street sidewalks and trails? Because we're going to, ten years from now, we're still going to need to maintain our roads.
There are a couple of things in there. One thing I wanted to touch on is if we were talking about guaranteeing debt associated with the revenue from, from the sales tax revenue, that is also a question that has to go to the electorate. And so if we're, if we're talking about bonding something associated with improvements, then that question would have to go to the electorate as well. So you could either roll it into the same, the same special election here or you would then, if not, and you wanted to bond it rather than just kind of on a pay as you go circumstance, then if you went pay as you go, then you could just fund it out of cash and get the money and receive it.
Based on what I'm seeing here though, it shows that street reconstruction is being bonded. So, you know, we're talking about ten-year general obligation debt for the street reconstruction projects. So that's already on here as a bonded project.
It's kind of on there as a bonded project because some of them won't qualify.
Some won't, yeah.
So that's a placeholder. Some streets won't qualify to be bonded. So we'll have to pick through and collectors and stuff can be bonded.
And let me make clear, I may not have been very clear on this. If you are going to pledge the revenues associated with the sales tax to obtain bond financing as a guarantee, then you have to have an election for that. You can still, I believe, use the revenues to pay down general obligation bonds that are obtained for purposes that satisfy the special purpose. You just can't use them as a guarantee for the issuance of a bond.
Right, okay. So that gets us back to one question.
Right.
Okay.
All right.
Okay. We're still kind of two, two on this. I, you know, I think...
I'll go with the half cent.
And those of you that are okay with the three quarter cent, you're probably okay with the half cent as well. And are we okay, are we okay with it for the pavement management, street reconstruction and trail reconstruction? Because I think we're already planning on doing the pedestrian bridges with cash in the upcoming year or at least that's probably what's going to be presented during budget. Is that right?
It'd be nice if we could toss it all out there in one big pot.
Okay.
And then if, and then if you have additional revenue, then you know you have the option to take care of your trails.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, I think that's the way we prioritize, streets, sidewalks.
Streets and then if...
Streets, sidewalks.
If our business is that we're not coming to produce enough money.
Because again, we don't have enough to cover it all now.
Correct.
The pedestrian bridge has to happen, so we can't keep having...
It's going to happen.
We can't keep having this. We've got to do this like next year.
And the trail reconstruction is three years. I mean, it's not...
Yeah.
That's not the whole ten.
Right, and we're already planning on doing it with cash, but...
How does this math work exactly? We got one million annual revenue. We've got five hundred and five thousand for neighborhood street reconstruction. We got eight hundred thousand for street preservation. I'm already over a million there.
Actually, okay, what I'm, what I'm saying is, is that if you take the six point six plus the five million fifty-two thousand, that gets you to...
That's many.
Eleven, yeah, go ahead.
The six point six is actually the two sub-bullets that are indented. Those two together are six point six plus financing. So don't add the six point six to the five million.
Oh, okay.
Add those two together and it's one point two-ish, one point three-ish. And so in answer to Councilman Moore's question, and actually perhaps Financial Advisor Kim just happens to be here for the meeting, but you can always size your debt issuances to your revenue streams. And so you wouldn't necessarily have to take on any one phase that was this big. You could say, oh, it's a little smaller and you wait until it builds up some. So we could scale, we could backload. We could backload, we could scale. You can delay a little piece, you can phase, you can use cash for some things. And I think your finance team and your financial advisor and everybody will get you there.
My, I'm going to say it again, I guess everybody's clear on this. My concern is that we'll be paying for current needs on the promise of future growth. And that concerns me because we've been down this road before and when that future growth didn't materialize, we had a massive property tax levy increase. And I'm, I, that's my biggest concern I've got right now.
And I agree with you, but what we're doing here takes care of current needs and not future growth with the sales tax money.
Yeah, but we still have to address future growth. That's the problem.
Yeah, well, and that's, I think that's a, I think that's a separate issue from the sales tax.
I suspect the financial advisor would be less than excited about bonding for every penny we expected to come in.
Oh, my goodness.
So, which is what's happened before.
Yeah, I know.
So we would size it down and then you would have a cash flow stream in addition to what...
Staff to move forward, special election, half cent sales tax for...
Infrastructure only?
Infrastructure only, but pavement, trails, pedestrian bridges.
Right, and, yeah. No, no, that was a...
Okay.
And then, and then the last piece is we have the two alternative dates, either live election, mail ballot. We've got the September one date where we could potentially share the cost of a live election in another jurisdiction or on the fifteenth, you could do either mail ballot or live.
Can I ask, I had a question. Cost difference between mail and live, is there, is there a difference?
Yeah, we, the election office says we're kind of right in the sweet spot. We're, where it's a cost wash. So you're looking at about thirty-five, forty-five thousand dollars.
Well, and with the, with the idea that turnout seems to be better with the mail ballot, with the...
That's correct, yes.
I mean, I think that's the way to go.
I want maximum participation. If we can go mail ballot, thirty-five thousand, forty-five thousand is a small price to pay to give the citizens, as many citizens as possible, their voice on this.
All right, very good. In that case, man, just under the wire.
So, we will be coming back with the resolution.
Probably the first meeting in June, second meeting in June.
Next month, we'll bring you a resolution for you to formally approve moving forward and us providing notice. We'll go ahead with the consensus tonight and at least let the supervisor of elections know.
We're not taking any action tonight, no, but just that direction.
We'll come back next month, okay.
Let's get it done.
I'm sure we'll get some inputs from the citizens between now and then.
Oh, I don't doubt.
Thank you.
That's very much welcome and appreciated. So, I'm going to call the Gardner City Council.